Hello, Neil Joining.
Hey Neil.
Aye.
Are we, are we almost ready?
Chair Moore, if you'd like to begin.
Yes, I would, thank you so much. So, I'm gonna call roll call. A call to order, and then roll call.
Commissioner Lehman. Commissioner O'Nite. Chair Moore, do you know if Commissioner O'Nite was gonna be in?
I don't, he did not indicate if he was not gonna be here, but, um, you wanna wait just a minute?
Uh, we can always proceed, uh, if status can be updated later.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, Commissioner Hancock?
Present.
Vice Chair McCanney?
Here.
Chair Moore.
Here. So we have the approval of the minutes for the Cattati Planning Commission Regular Meeting, April 6th of 2020. Do we have any changes to the minutes? See none, can I get a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, this is Neil.
Can I get a second?
Oh, second, this is Sylvia.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lehman?
Aye.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner McCanney?
Yes.
Chair Moore?
Yes.
And I'll show Commissioner O'Nite as absent at this time.
Now we go down to the changes to the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda for staff?
No changes to the agenda.
Alright, thank you. And we have oral and written communications, um, usually the public is asked to step to the podium, but the public is asked to, um, I guess, call in, and please let me comment to, I am sorry, are we adjourned, I suppose, discussion?
Commissioner, correction, Chair Moore, if I may, I'm gonna go ahead and let our attendees know that if they have an oral communication, uh, that they can participate and make a public comment by using the raising hand icon on their smart device, or desktop computer. Um, they may also dial star nine if they're using gesture telephone. Please listen carefully for the chair or myself to address it by name or phone number, and for the audible zoom notification that you've been unmuted. Once you begin your public comment, your three minutes will begin. And I'll, to our attendees, and at this time, Chair Moore, I see no raised hand.
Alright, so then we will move on to, I will close the oral and written communications, and I'll move on to matters at hand. And I apologize, I have a tickle in my throat tonight from the smoke, so, is what it is. So the matters at hand would be consideration of a resolution recommending city council adoption of the draft document titled Guidelines for Analysis of Vehicle Miles Traveled, the doctrine of the VMT thresholds of significance published therein to be used in evaluating transportation impacts under the California Environmental Quality Act, known as CEQA. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Cattati recommending city council adoption of the draft document titled Guidelines for Analysis of Vehicle Miles Traveled, VMT, the doctrine of the VMT thresholds of significance published therein to be used for evaluating transportation impacts under the California Environmental Quality Act, known as CEQA. And then we have a staff report.
JP, can you hear us?
Was there anyone else able to hear JP? I was not, he's having some chat.
Nobody was, I, I, I couldn't hear him.
Okay, just give us one minute, we'll work that out.
Sure, sure. Hey Neil?
Uh-huh.
Um, you might, during the thing, can you mute?
Thank you. Okay, mute him.
Commissioner, JP's having some technical difficulties, he's going to, uh, log out and log back into the meeting, so just one moment, please.
Okay. Alright, thank you for everyone's patience, I'm not sure what happened there. Um, so tonight, we're talking about, um, VMT. Anyone recall back in May, I gave a fairly lengthy and in-depth presentation on CEQA and vehicle miles traveled. I'm gonna review a little bit of that tonight, just because I know there was a lot of it last time. But essentially what we're doing is we're adopting thresholds of significance for transportation impacts. Um, it's required that it be done through a public process, uh, when you do adopt, um, thresholds of significance. Okay Lauren, can you go to next slide, please? Uh, so briefly, Senate Bill 743 was chap, was signed by the governor and chaptered in 2013, and it changes how transportation impacts are considered under CEQA. Uh, it requires that LOS, which is Measure of Congestion, Automobile Congestion, uh, no longer be used to estimate transportation impacts. They want to focus on regional level, uh, impacts, as well as some other things that I'll touch on. And, uh, the legislation, Senate Bill 743, kinda directed the Office of Planning and Research to draft, uh, new guidelines for transportation evaluating, evaluation. And, uh, the OPR, uh, did do that, and determined that VMT or Vehicle Miles Travel is the most appropriate metric for analyzing transportation impacts. And as of July 1, 2020, all CEQA analysis that looks at transportation impacts must use VMT. Um, this hasn't affected us yet, but it will, very shortly in the future. Okay, next slide, Lauren. And again. Uh, so just briefly, we're getting rid of this level of service. Now, uh, we will be using level of service when we look at projects, but we're gonna be looking at it in terms of making consistency findings with our general plan. Our general plan, as well as the EIR that went with it, uh, but it does include level of service standards, um, and we will continue to look at those as part of projects. So what we're talking about with the VMT is specific to how transportation impacts will be looked at under CEQA. So when we prepare an environmental document, um, that's the metric that we're going to be using, uh, in analysis of transportation. And so briefly, level of service is a measure of congestion. So the more congested an intersection or a section of roadway becomes, uh, the lower the score tends to go unless you increase the capacity of that intersection or, or section of roadway. Um, it does not measure things like, uh, the vibrancy of an area in terms of like how many pedestrians are in the area. It doesn't measure walkability, it doesn't measure bikability. Uh, those are some of the problems with it. Next slide, please, Lauren. Um, and these two pictures are which OPR uses to illustrate the problem. Uh, on the left is a wide open road with a very good LOS score. On the right is kind of like a vibrant downtown that a lot of communities try to achieve, uh, but it ends up getting a very poor score. And so it's, uh, very difficult for project proponents, uh, to move a project through, uh, the environmental review process when you're, we're working with congested areas like that. Okay, next slide, please. And just briefly again, part of the reason why we're moving away from LOS is, uh, it does actually tend to worsen overall congestion. You fix a problem in one spot, it tends to move the problem down to another. It, um, the LOS assessments are time-consuming and expensive and not always very accurate. It discourages infill development and promotes sprawl. Uh, it increases travel lengths in automobiles. It discourages transit as well as active transportation like walking and biking. And it generally produces poor outcomes to the environment through excessive land coverage from additional roadways and intersection widening, as well as habit, habitat fragmentation due to additional roadways. Also, uh, it reduces health because people tend to be less active, it's easier to drive. And also, high, uh, very good LOS conditions tend to mean cars are moving at higher speeds, which results in increased injury accidents. Okay, next slide. So, uh, so the, the, the direction is to move to VMT. Um, and so VMT looks at the amount of vehicular travel across the entire transportation system of a, of a region. It measures, uh, total travel and activity, not congestion. Um, and it tries to get towards the, the bigger picture of what are the regional impacts of automobile travel. And then at the bottom of this slide, there's a description of what VMT is. It's, uh, a number of trips that a project generates, and there are published tables so that it, you know, like, it's pretty well established what kind of projects generate how many trips. So a, a, a new single-family home generates 10 trips per day, for example. And so you look at the number of trips generated by a project, and then multiply that by trip length, and you get VMT. Um, it should be known that none of this is directly measurable, uh, it's all relies on traffic models. And we will be relying on the Sonoma County travel model, which, uh, the Sonoma County Transportation Authority maintains, FCPA. Uh, they, they, um, have a traffic model and they maintain that traffic model. And so that's the model that will be encouraging project proponents to utilize in their analyses. The next slide, please. And then, uh, why go to VMT, I think we've covered a lot of this, it's just, it's better for health, better for the environment. Uh, it encourages mode shift from automobiles to walking and biking, uh, decreases travel lengths and time, and, um, is really the best umbrella metric for measuring transportation impacts and aligning transportation with the statewide goals, which are to promote infill development, uh, promote public health through active transportation, and reduce greenhouse gas. And the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions is a key one for the thresholds of significance that we're proposing the city adopt. And you can go to the next slide, please. And here's a, a graph of, uh, it shows the relationship as VMT per capita, so VMT per person goes up, there's a strong correlation with the amount of CO2 that, uh, is, that is released. Those green dots on the right are the goals, the statewide goals that we have, and this is why the state is pushing to reduce VMT, because in order to meet those goals for greenhouse gas emissions, they have to drive VMT down statewide. Next slide, please. Okay, so next I'm gonna talk about the draft guidelines, uh, that we prepared, and those draft guidelines will begin on page 69 of your packet. And it's an 11-page packet, uh, which, oh, let's go to the next slide. Okay, so what the pack, what, actually, can you go a few slides down, Lauren, I'll tell you when to stop, I think, but go down 3. And then we'll come back to these, I apologize, I was rushing to put this in order after my power went out and lost all my work this morning. Go 2 down, Lauren? One more, one more? Okay, so the draft guidelines, here's what, on page 69, the guidelines that we put together, address several things. One, describes the metrics, which is how VMT should be presented. There are various technical ways of doing that. Um, it also identifies which projects will require quantitative VMT analysis, and which projects, uh, we, that we can presume do not have a VMT impact. It, uh, includes the methods of analysis or the techniques that should be used to calculate and forecast VMT. And then importantly, it describes the thresholds of significance, which are the criteria that we will use to determine what level of VMT is considered to be a significant environmental impact. When you're doing an analysis and there may be a significant environmental impact, you either need to identify mitigation, or else you need to move to the preparation of what's called an environmental impact report, which is a fairly lengthy and expensive process to go through. And, and then even then, you still must identify all the mitigation that you can. And if the agent, let's just say there is a significant VMT impact that can't be mitigated, they would have to produce a environmental impact report disclosing all those impacts. And then as decision-makers, if you wanted to approve a project that did have a significant impact associated with it, you would have to do what's called an overriding, uh, a statement of overriding considerations, either socio or economic considerations. And there's a series of findings that have to be made in order to, to go that path. And also, the, the document describes some mitigation measures that, that project proponents could include to reduce their VMT impacts. Okay, if you could go back up to, to, uh, 3 slides, please. Thank you, right there. So there are rules for how you establish thresholds of significance. First of all, a threshold of significance is, uh, is an identifiable quantitative or qualitative, basically a performance level of a particular environmental effect. Uh, non-compliance with the threshold or exceeding the threshold generally means that the impact will be determined to be significant. If you can comply with the threshold, then the effect will be considered to be less than significant. And those terms, significant and less than significant, I know may be a little nebulous, but they're very important when you're doing CEQA analysis. And it typically relies on the, the lead agency, and City of Cattati is a lead agency when we evaluate projects. It's up to the lead agency to determine where those levels of significance are, um, at, with any impact and with every document. Okay, next slide, please. So, um, the guide, uh, CEQA guidelines encourage, uh, every public agency to develop and publish thresholds of significance. And so historically, our LOS standards were published in our general plan and the environmental documents associated with that. Um, since LOS is no longer going to be applicable, this is why we're moving forward with these guidelines so that we can disclose and publish what our thresholds of significance are for, for VMT. Um, they must be adopted by resolution, ordinance, or regulation. It must go through a public review process, and when you do this, it has to be supported by substantial evidence. Um, also with every project, if we, we can always, we can rely on the thresholds of significance, or we can always look at them on a case-by-case basis. So we do the best that we can in establishing these thresholds to provide guidance to project proponents. But any project could have certain aspects to it that would require, which we would say, no, we need to look at this a different way, or we're gonna measure it differently. You always have to make that decision based on the project. Okay, next slide, please. Um, and this is an important piece, when you're considering thresholds of significance... When you're considering thresholds of significance, you may rely on previously adopted or recommended by other public agencies or recommended by experts, provided they have done the work and supported their work with substantial evidence. This is what we're largely doing. The thresholds that are in the guidelines that we're recommending adoption are, rely entirely on what came out of OPR's research and what their recommendations are. We think they're the best ones because they are tied to not only statewide greenhouse gas emission goals, but also the cities. So, it does appear to be the appropriate metric and the appropriate thresholds to use, and I'll discuss those in a minute. But they've done the work, and we're relying on their work in establishing these thresholds. And then, next slide, please. And one more. Okay, so, like I said, these are based on the OPR's recommendation. These are largely laid out in the Technical Advisory on Evaluating Transportation Impacts. That document is in your board packet, so that you can look at it yourself if you're interested. Excuse me, one second. It's on page, I think it's on page 19. And the OPR's recommendations are based on research and assessments by the California Air Resources Board, quantifying the need for VMT reduction, and that's where the, it's 15% that we're going to talk about, that's where it comes from. And again, it's tied to their long-term climate goals. And then, also, we're going with them because they've done the work to show that it's feasible for projects to meet these goals. If you establish a threshold, it's feasible for projects to comply with them. Okay, next slide, please. So, these are the recommended thresholds of significance that are laid out in the guidelines for residential projects. A project would cause significant additional VMT if it exceeds the citywide average VMT per capita, minus 15%. So, we have to get, we're aiming to be below for residential projects, we want to be 15% below, and I'll show you a little bit of what that means on the following slide. For office projects, a project would cause significant additional VMT if it exceeds the existing countywide average. And whether or not you city and county is a little bit technical, but these are appropriate measures to use considering what OPR's recommendations are. Retail projects, retail projects tend to redistribute trips as opposed to generate new trips. So, there, the project would cause significant additional VMT if it results in a net increase in regional total VMT. Redevelopment projects are the same way. So, we'll be looking at, if it's a redevelopment project, what is the VMT compared to what the VMT was with the previous project? And then, with other development projects, we'll probably be going, looking at them on a case-by-case basis. Okay, next slide, please. So, this is a little bit of what I mean. So, like, on that top line, you'll see Cattati VMT, and you'll see residential VMT per capita. So, this is what's within a residential project. Generally, each person is traveling 19.42 miles a day. So, a new project coming in, we'll have to evaluate the proposed VMT, and the number that would be a level of significance is if they're, if they would increase, basically, if they were to be above 16.51 VMT per capita. I don't want to bog me down with the details because it's very confusing, but that is the number that we'll be using as a threshold right now with the baseline conditions that we have. We'll be using Cattati's city VMT per capita. When we look at, like, office projects, we'll be using the countywide VMT per worker as a baseline, and then you'll have to be 15% below that. So, a project will have to show that it's 10.9 VMT per employee or less. Okay, next slide, please. Also, we're adopting kind of screening thresholds where there's a lot, a number of projects that won't need to go through this in-depth analysis. And this comes from OPR as well. These are what they're recommending, that these projects, in general, unless there's something unique about them, that they be screened out from this analysis. And it's a series of small projects that generate basically less than 110 trips per day. And so, that would be, for example, like, 11 or fewer single-family homes. You had a project, you know, proposing that, they'd be exempt from this type of analysis. 25 or fewer multifamily homes, multifamily homes tend to generate less trips, according to the trip tables. Also, the state is promoting more higher-density multifamily homes, so they're recommending this as a threshold. Office buildings, 11,000 square feet or less, industrial buildings, 22,000 square feet or less, and local serving retail, 10,000 square feet or less. Above that, then we'd be looking at, minus some other considerations, then we'd probably be looking at some more in-depth analysis. So, also, if you're within half a mile of a major transit stop like Smart, you'd be exempt from the VMT analysis. If the project was 100% affordable housing, again, you would also be screened out. Local serving public facilities like library and parks, as well as transit, active transportation projects, and any reduction in roadway capacity or traffic calming things. And then, also, in addition to this, the OPR is recommending a map-based screening for residential and office uses. And these are areas that have already been found to be low VMT areas, and so, the assumption is, is development within these areas will also produce low VMT. And if you go to the next screen, please. So, this is a map of what we would use for screening out residential projects. It's a little bit different than what's in the guidelines, only because it has numbers associated with it. And you can see that green area, the highlighted green area, those areas would be screened out, and you'll notice that those, the average VMT per capita in those areas is below that 16.5 threshold. So, these are considered to be low VMT generating areas, and projects within those areas would be screened out, residential projects. Next slide, please. And this is an example of office projects that would be screened out, any within this highlighted area. And these maps are, by the way, they're produced by the SCTA based on their models. And next slide, please. So, in closing, we're recommending adoption of the resolution on packet page 67. It recommends city council adoption of the guidelines for analysis of VMT, and the VMT thresholds of significance that will be published within that document. And with that, I will, that's all I really want to say tonight, and I'm available for any questions or any comments that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, JP. I'm going to ask if anyone has any questions of staff?
Yes, I would have.
Okay, Neil, you go first.
Yeah, JP, thank you for the overview. It's a lot of information. How does the numbers come, how does SCTA come up with the numbers? Do you know?
Yeah, so, Lauren, can you go up a few slides to that residential screening slide that I had, with all the little numbers on it? So, right, one more down. You're right there.
Table one, yeah.
Yeah, go down again. I mean, the other way. Go to that first image of the map of Cattati. One more down, there, stop there. So, notice, this is a little bit technical, but notice all these blocks that have a number associated with them. Those are what are called traffic area zones, or CAS for short. And so, they use a model that, and they use a lot of big data in doing this as well. They have an idea of where all the trips that are going to and from these particular zones. And they use those, the trip data associated with those zones to generate the data, I guess is what I should say. And then, when, if you do look at that table one, which might just be better to look at in your packet, which is on page...
Seventy-four?
Correct, seventy-four. You can see kind of the numbers that they produce using the information they get from those traffic area zones. And I don't know, you know, I wish I could give you a better answer than that, but I'm not.
I've got an idea of how they're doing it. There's a lot of information out there of what's going on, but it's just, it's interesting. So, Cattati has given a figure, you've got the residential VMT per capita at 19.42, and then saying the threshold of significance is 16.51 miles, but the map shows a variety of stuff. So, if somebody was to, I mean, a lot of it's already built up, I can see that. But if somebody was to do something in the 18.15, being realistic, along Gravestine Highway, that's a lower threshold, that's a lower number that's currently estimated for Cattati's average, but they would, they would have to basically, if they, if their new trip generator or if the SEQA came up with something that was more than 16.51 for that area, then they would be deemed having a threshold that exceeds.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. So, because that area is 18.15 now, they would not automatically be screened out based on the map, because that is a higher VMT area. And if the project were a large project, and it wasn't one of the small projects, that could be screened out, then they would be looking at a much more in-depth VMT analysis, which our guidelines help step them through that process. And then, if they are able to mitigate those VMT impacts through, you know, a whole series of things like improving transit or access to transit, or bike lanes or trails, or any quantifiable or even qualitative way of addressing that down to below a level of significance, then we could approve the project without going through an EIR for transportation impacts alone. But you're exactly right. So, that area is going to, any area that's not green here, like any of these kind of light gold areas, they're going to be, you know, we're going to be looking at any project in those areas with a much more critical eye.
Right, and so, the, along Old Redwood Highway, there's another area, 20.61, but that's unlikely to have more than 11 housing units done on it for a project there, because those are fairly, the zoning areas for larger properties.
You know, well, that 20.61 area, actually, it, here's what could happen, just as a scenario. Some of that includes areas that's not within the city. So, let's say someone acquired a chunk of land in that area and wanted to annex into the city, and at the same time, they were proposing a housing development project. Well, that, you know, clearly, we're going to be looking at that because that's a high VMT generating area as well, and then coupling it with an annexation in a project. I don't know if I just complicated your answer or your question, but...
And, well, it's a little bit of both. It's just trying to understand what is a threshold of significance when you have these, you know, 20.61 is probably an area that has a lot of commuters, and it has larger properties.
So, this is only a screening map. So, any area within these kind of light gold areas are going to, they're not going to automatically be screened out because of the map. At six, whatever their project is, they're going to have to show that it's 16.50 or below. Otherwise, we're going to be looking at it as a significant impact to the environment.
So, they have to figure out then some other steps?
They either, they have to figure out what mitigation measures they can include, or they have to prepare an EIR and go through that process. And if you wanted to approve that project, you would have to make overriding, you'd have to make a statement of overriding considerations.
Commissioner Hancock, this is, this is no house. I would just add, and for the whole commission too, that the intent of this item tonight is kind of to draw a bright line as to where traffic impacts related to how much, how many vehicle miles are traveled based on a specific project are deemed to be significant or an issue under SEQA in the city, or less than significant on their face. Each project coming in is going to have to provide a project-specific analysis that documents how that project will or will not cross that bright line. And then, the resulting document will either include mitigation measures, or as JP identified, maybe a statement of overriding considerations identifying significant and unavoidable impacts, or some combination of those things in relation to vehicle miles traveled.
Right, yeah, absolutely, it does, and I really support it. I think it's a good idea. It's just trying to understand what the landscape is, and, you know, and so, yes, I support it. So, thank you very much for the questions.
Thank you, Don. Does anyone else have any, Brittany, do you? Any questions?
No, I do not have any questions at this time, but thank you for the thorough overview. It's very helpful to have you walk us through that.
Awesome. Sophia, any questions?
No, no questions. I was just looking at the mitigation. It sounds like they can, there's a whole range of options that you offer at the end of page 80, including fees, where they can pay like additional fees towards a bank set up. Do you know if that's something that we have, a VMT mitigation bank, and is that used for improvements and things, or how's that set up?
Well, it's not set up now. There is, if it is set up, and I think the goal is to set something up like that, it will probably be a regional VMT mitigation bank, and it will probably be used to fund things like improving transit, improving bikeability and walkability of, you know, of the various jurisdictions. So, people would be, the idea is, is that if you have a project and you can't do anything on-site to mitigate it, and you can't do anything off-site to mitigate your VMT impacts, then you'd be able to pay into this larger fee, kind of like we do with parks, you know, people, you have to pay a park and move fee if you're doing a large development project.
And is there a level, is there a level of mitigation? Like, do they choose what they want to do, or do we have like a level of mitigation that we kind of give them, that they kind of have to go with?
They would be able to choose, and, you know, based on what works for their project or what we are encouraging them to look for. So, it could be something on-site, and it could even be off-site mitigation that they could, they could do. Say, we want to close a gap in a bike trail or something. The challenge is, they'll be, they'll have to either quantitatively describe how it's improving it, or SEQA does allow for qualitative analysis when there's no ability to do a really sound quantitative analysis. So, it's going to be a little bit interesting to see how this plays out in the beginning. And kind of, Neil, this also gives to your, your question about, you know, what's the landscape. I will say, this is brand new for everybody. I will say, this is brand new for, for everybody, and all the jurisdictions around the state are really struggling with this right now. And the truth is, you know, how this plays out over the next year is gonna be interesting to see, and largely, I think we're all looking back to see what the courts are gonna say as these different projects. You know, SEQA always ends up in court, and it seems like almost all aspects of SEQA are tested in the courts. And they, and then through the court decisions, that's where a lot of guidance on what, how, and how you implement this particular aspect, and, and then what's the appropriate methods for doing it. So I expect this to be a fluid and changing situation over the next couple of years as, as this VMT is put into play. So yeah, I mean, that's all I can say. It's, it's brand new for everybody. I mean, VMT's been around for a while, but using these types of, excuse me, thresholds of significance tied directly to transportation impacts is a brand new thing, so.
Thank you. Jiffy, Steve, I see you're on. Do you have any questions?
My apologies for being late. I was watching a convention. I was wondering, and of course, perhaps you've covered this, but it seemed like if we did an overlay of the city, that quite a bit of this is not city property or territory. Is that correct?
Well, what you're looking at is largely, and this particular one that's on the screen, a bunch of it is not. On the perimeter, those are areas that are outside the city limits currently, but they are within our sphere of influence. So, any potential annexation, any, you know, we'd have to look at these numbers under that kind of scenario, or if someone was proposing a project that the county was approving and we were analyzing it, you know, at the request of the county to, to look, to find out what our comments are, we'd also be looking at these areas. So these are areas that, those are outside the city limits, they're within our urban boundary, and they're within our sphere of influence.
So JP, what you're saying is that since it's in our sphere of influence, we would have an input to anything done in that area, is that correct?
That's correct. We try to, unless the projects are really minor, that, you know, residential projects, then, then we don't usually get engaged.
Okay, thank you. That's my question.
All right, thank you, Steve. Does anyone else have any questions? I had a question on loss of service. When I was reading the packet, I see that we're still gonna use that for some of our general plan?
That's right, that's right. It's still, I mean, level of service is still an important metric to use. What, what, what this does is it just divorces it from the SEQA analysis, but we'll still be looking at it to make consistency findings. It's important because we need to know that we have an adequate transportation system. And so we look at level of service to, to measure how, you know, how, how's our transportation system functioning. As well, it's, there's a nexus between our fee programs and, and the level of service. And then, as you've seen recently with some projects, sometimes a project proponent comes in with a project, but we think, and the evidence shows, that it's gonna require improvements to the intersections, or the installation of a signal, or turn lanes, or widening. Those are all important things for us to look at, and we will continue to do that in the light of, in light of what's in our general plan. So yeah, it's not going away in terms of when it comes to you for a decision, but it just won't be included in SEQA documents and cannot be included in SEQA documents.
Thank you, JP. That was my question.
I've got another regional question, if there's a... So JP, just looking to the bottom right of that map, in the, I guess, the southeast corner, and knowing that there's potentially for a lot of growth that's planned there outside the city limits, will a regional perspective be something that comes into the, something... So will all the tracks, the traffic generated outside the city limits that might pass through the city and cause cascading LOSs be something that will now get more visibility at the regional level, at the SCTA level? Or is it just what you...
I can say that there is a direction. Well, I, I just don't want to speak out of turn. I can say that there's definitely an emphasis and a direction to look at more regional level impacts, yes. I mean, there's an effort and a desire to want to do that. For example, you know, as Riner Park grows, there is, like, let's just use a couple of intersections, for example, like the intersection at Petaluma Hill and Railroad and Railroad Avenue, or Railroad Avenue and Old Redwood Highway. Both of those are terrible intersections, and there seems to be a lot of growth, but LOS is so confined in the number of intersections that it looks at, that those kind of, those type of intersections, which are far away from most developments, tend to be ignored, and the impacts at those intersections just grow and grow more over time. So there is a huge recognition that there needs to be a regional look and, and a way of getting at, regionally, addressing some of these larger problems. So that is the direction. What programs are gonna come out of that? I'm not real sure. Those are largely being driven by the SCTA, and I think they're considering things like regional impact fees, but, you know, none of that's been vetted, I'm aware of, and none of that's kind of come to the surface just yet. But that is the direction, that is the desire that people want to go in, because they, they do, and VMT is trying to move everything into a regional, more of a regional comprehensive look at transportation, rather than focused intersection looks, so.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
All right. So I'm gonna open this up for the public. Lauren?
Thank you, Chair Moore. Jenny Blinker, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you can, Jenny.
Okay, good. Thank you. I wanted to say thank you very much to JP Harris for fantastic presentation. I've been looking at some of this VMT stuff at the OPR website, and this, this presentation just seemed very, very clear and helpful, so thank you. And I wanted to say that in general, I support the resolution and urge you to approve it. I have lots of questions, and they may be too broad for what you're looking at right now, where you're really focusing on the thresholds of significance, but I just wondered about a number of things, like if VMT, if the goal of VMT is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, it seems strange to throw out loss of service considerations altogether, because idling cars sitting in traffic are going to be providing more greenhouse gases, so I just have a question about that. It also seems to be assuming that all the cars on the roads are powered by gas, and what will happen as more and more electric cars get on the road and replace gas-powered cars? And then I'm also wondering about electric bikes and whether they count as, as bikes or what? And then I, this is probably way too far ahead, because you, you need, you'll be thinking about the programs later, but I was wondering if it would be useful to have a survey in Katari about incentives and obstacles to walking and cycling, to find out more about what would encourage people to walk and bicycle. For example, I'm sure the Wayfinding Program will be really helpful because of showing people where the connections are that they may not know about, and I'm sure safety is a huge issue for most people who don't feel comfortable bicycling. And you mentioned education and training somewhere in the papers, and I was thinking it would be great to have things like the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition, safety trainings, and guided bike rides, and things perhaps put on through the Recreation Department. But I know I'm getting way away from thresholds of significance, but I, I found this very interesting, and interesting that the region is, is thinking about this, and quite exciting as a, as a positive contribution to doing something about the climate crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Appreciate it.
Chair Moore, there are no more...
All right, thank you. I'm gonna close the public hearing, and then can we just have the staff address some of Jenny's questions, please?
Sure. So, some excellent points, actually. So with respect to idling cars, they're not being ignored. They, yes, by not looking at LOS, you're not gonna be addressing congestion, but there's a whole series of environmental impacts, potential environmental impacts that have to be looked at, looked through SEQA, and one of them is air quality, and, and another is greenhouse gas emission. So, both of those are still going to be looked at. So if a project, if a project was going to generate, you know, so much traffic that it would result in a lot more cars, there could be an environmental impact just based on emissions alone. So it does get captured in, in two different ways. One, air quality impacts, like, you know, the, the exhaust of pollutants, as well as nitrogen and phosphorus, or NOx, I should say, various streams of nitrogen, and then, and then greenhouse gas emissions. So it is getting picked up, it's just not gonna be picked up as an actual transportation impact. Transportation impacts will be measured by VMT metrics, but it's not, but it's, it's not ignoring the idling car situation. And then with respect to EV cars, yeah, absolutely. Things are improving with EV cars, and if, on the, one of the map, or one of the graphs that I had there, that had the green dots, you'll probably notice that there was a separation between VMT and CO2 emissions. That's been happening over the last ten years, and that's been because of, one, cars have been getting cleaner, and the, the mix of vehicles in terms of the number of electric vehicles is increasing. But it's nowhere near enough to get to the VMT, the greenhouse gas reductions that we need to get to. There's still a lot of other factors at play, a lot of gas emitting cars. So while EV cars are helping, and they're certainly, you know, countywide, we're trying to develop programs to increase EV cars, or electric cars, it's still not enough. So this is that extra stuff that needs to be done. And then with, with respect to everything else that you said regarding incentives, yeah, you know, I, we're gonna be looking a lot more at, bike and pegs going nowhere, and we're gonna be talking about, I mean, going nowhere in terms of, we're very interested in pushing as much as we can. We're gonna talk about some of the other things that we're doing later in Noah's presentation, but, you know, things like surveys and identifying barriers to walkability and bikeability are, and definitely things we're gonna be looking at, especially, and we put it on hold just because we've had other things that the state's demanding on us, but especially as we get into the bike and pedestrian master plan update, those will be a great opportunity to look at, look at a lot of those things that you had just suggested, Jenny.
All right, thank you, JP. Appreciate it. Um, did I see, no more questions? We're gonna go to any discussion on the resolution, or does someone want to make a motion?
If there's no discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the VMT, the matters of, what we just talked about. I can read the whole thing if we want to.
Lauren, you want to...
Yeah, I will, second.
Okay.
So, Lauren, I'm sorry, I didn't catch you with second.
Brittany.
Brittany. Thank you, Brittany. Chair Moore, go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Commissioner Lemus?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Nais?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Canny?
Yes.
Chair Moore?
Yes. JP, thank you for the very in-depth presentation. I appreciate, appreciate all your work on that.
Thank you for your patience and attention. Thank you.
So we're gonna move on to, I'm going back to my, comprehensive department updates. Staff report?
Thank you, Chair Moore, members of the commission. I'm gonna retry to request screen control. Okay, I think I have it. Yeah, thank you JP for an excellent presentation. Referencing Ms. Blaker's comments, this is a very complex topic, VMT was, and JP has done a ton of work to really distill it down, and I think if any of you take the time to look at some of the other information out there, you'll recognize how well of a jar, how well he has done this. And I will also say, you know, to some of our other points, SB seven forty-three, which directed the state to start looking at this, was from 2013, and so it just shows kind of the pace of change that we've all experienced, and to her point, I think really the consideration is really G VMT, or gasoline vehicle miles traveled, but anyway, I'll get on to my presentation. So as identified, this, the second item on tonight's agenda is intended to be a comprehensive department report to inform the commission and the public on various changes and actions that have occurred since our last meeting, which was in May of 2020, seems like a lifetime ago. And I do apologize for the format of the report and the attachment. There was issues that I realized after publication, so I will absolutely do my best to help clarify some of the, kind of the formatting impacts that kind of made it a little bit hard to get through. I do apologize. So I'm planning on touching on essentially these five topics to try to give everyone a brief update on some of the things we've been working on since May. Obviously, we've all been, you know, responding to the challenges of COVID-19 and how it's impacted, you know, every facet of our lives. We, I want to touch on some of the efforts that we've done around economic development, give a brief update on the various projects that the city has under construction now, and then also some of the past entitlements that the commission and council have granted in recent times. Talk about some of the priorities from, that are identified in the budget for the coming year, and then kind of close with some of our housing and other regional collaboration efforts. And I just, you know, depending on the preference of the chair and the commission, I'm happy to take comments after each topic, and then of course, we'll be able to provide details and responses to questions from the public or commissioners at the end. But I'm, I'm just, feel free, I'll take a pause after each one, and I'm happy to chat to make it a little bit more conversational. So getting to the COVID response, you know, obviously, staffing for your safety was the top priority, and so in March, as the concerns over the impacts of the virus kind of began to increase significantly, City Hall and the Police Department were closed to the public, and all staff were directed to figure out ways to work remotely. We implemented numerous modifications to our, our in-office protocols. This meeting is a, is a great example of that, and I just want to say hats off to our city clerk and all of our decision-making boards, the, the commission and the city council, for kind of jumping in with both feet and really allowing us to continue to do our work here and help the community. Obviously, we activated the Emergency Operations Center right away. Originally, we were having daily meetings, trying to, trying to make sure our response was adequate as, as best we were able to with our resources. That has transitioned to a couple of meetings a week, and we've started to pivot to thinking about the challenges associated with the public safety, our shut-offs, and obviously, this week has reminded us all of those efforts. Continuing, city services was seen as critical, obviously, to operating under COVID, and so all priorities was made to, or were, were all efforts towards this were seen as the number one priority, especially for our department. We felt it was gonna be critical for us to continue to operate, to support folks in the community who were trying to invest in their properties and still even maintain their properties during this kind of unprecedented time, and so we really made a lot of effort to be able to continue to provide planning and building. building services. Some of the things we do, we digitize all of our applications, we've modified all of our processes to allow remote work and, you know, remote applications, remote meetings with the community, all of those things. We really expanded the information that's available on our website and started using social media more. So if anybody isn't following the city on the various social media accounts, I would encourage them to do so. We're starting to push out as much information as we can on our social media accounts to just do everything we can to reach folks. This is a point of concern, however, for the department, because we really do feel that as we move forward with just the continued uncertainty, we have a lot of work on our plate, and we need the community to be able to plug in and participate with us. And so any ideas that folks have about how we could expand those efforts, staff is all ears, and we really would appreciate it. But we've tried to make a lot of effort to bring folks information to where they are and continue, will continue on those efforts. And then just lastly, code enforcement, obviously, maintaining our regulations in the face of this pandemic is still critical, and with the recent changes at the county level, delegating this enforcement from law enforcement to code enforcement, you know, we've been pivoting with that. We will continue to use kind of a blend of our police department and our code enforcement staff as we, as resources are available, depending on the timing and the type of the complaints. But just know that code enforcement is ongoing, and we continue to build and expand that element of the department as required to kind of fit the needs of the community. So getting into some of the economic development efforts, I wanted to talk about, basically on the 28th of this year, the council unanimously supported the package of economic development zoning code amendments that the planning commission had unanimously recommended. These modifications went into effect on June 12th, and they significantly increased the flexibility for how businesses operate within the city. There's numerous kind of facets to those changes that were identified in that staff report on June 12th to the council, and there's a little bit more information in this report. I do feel that awareness of these changes were probably drowned out by the COVID-19 impacts, but if any, if any folks in the community have questions about how they could be operating or questions about maybe making some changes to their business, I would just encourage them to reach out to the department, and we are all ears. And separate from those efforts, on May 26th of this year, the council unanimously approved some temporary changes to business operations to allow flexibility specific to COVID-19. This was done through resolution that was not brought before the planning commission. We were trying to expedite these allowances, and so staff made the decision to take that resolution specifically to the city council. The May 26th council item is included as an attachment to this planning commission agenda, and I would just encourage the commissioners, if you have any questions on what's allowed, that begins on, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the page in the packet. But it begins on page, packet, page 121 is the staff report, and it goes through 136. So there's kind of some of the additional allowances that the council have blessed, some of the things that staff was anticipating, but generally, it allows businesses to use outdoor spaces, their parking spaces, sidewalks, and other areas around their businesses for activities, both public and private property. Operating on private property is essentially allowed by right, although there are certain limitations and requirements. And then the use of public land is accommodated through a no-fee permit. So we still have some regulations and obviously make sure all the safeguards are in place, but we're allowing folks to request that use and reviewing and approving it with no cost, and that was directly from the, at the direction of the city council. However, we do anticipate more efforts to be needed. That allowance, temporary allowance, went through October of 2020. As the weather changes, as new elements and facets to this ongoing effort occur, we anticipate the need to make some changes, and we are considering trying to bring back some additional items to the city council in September. Staff will keep you updated on those efforts. And we're getting about, an average of about two inquiries a week from a variety of different business types to use these specific flexible accommodations that the city council has made. That question was provided from Vice Chair Moore at the city council meeting, and I wasn't, I didn't have those stats or hadn't seen enough to really identify a pattern, but I'm comfortable now saying we're seeing about two types, two businesses a week, and it's from all different industries. And so again, if you all are running into folks who have questions, please send them our way, because we are getting back to the point about needing to engage with the community. The more information we have about the needs out there, the better we can respond. Are there any questions on any of these items before I move on to individual projects?
I had a quick question. This is Neil Hancock.
Sure.
So just what are the social media presences, and how are you, in a sense, branding it? What are you, what are you, what's your short form?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So we came up with a kind of reopen Qatati, and this was probably two months ago now, and created a flyer with a link to the website, trying to summarize the information that, that basically let businesses know that there's a lot of flexibility in what they can do. And frankly, we're interested in hearing what their needs are to try to do more. That went out on our Instagram account, on our Facebook account. We handed out that flyer to some folks at the farmer's market. We've been tabling at the farmer's market. Community development staff specifically has been attending the city's table and trying to speak with folks. But one of the things we ran into is it's just the, kind of the breadth of responses, you know, anything from some businesses not even considering opening to some really struggling with how to find information. As you're all aware, the requirements were changing rapidly. Excuse me, they were changing rapidly, and so we were trying to keep up with those, those changes almost on a, on a weekly basis to keep everyone informed. And so one of the things we've also done, which I'll touch on, is really plugged in regionally. So we attend weekly meetings with the Snoma County Economic Development Board. We've plugged in with the Small Business Development Council. And just try to leverage those resources and get them out, also providing information to the Chamber of Commerce as soon as we have it.
Right. Actually, I was thinking of a little bit simpler than that was, and I found it on Facebook looking, it's City of Qatati is what you're, I mean, there needs to be a consistent way of looking for something on a, on a, on a, on a social media. So City of Qatati does pop up for me on Facebook, but when I go to Nextdoor, it doesn't. So I'm just really wondering if you've come up with a standard, is it City of Qatati that we should look for on different social media?
Thank you. That's an excellent question. I'm sorry for my level of detail. Absolutely. So we are trying to preserve the City of Qatati as the sole source of information, separate from the police department. And so all of the community development-specific information is being pushed out through the City of Qatati accounts. I do not know if we are on Nextdoor, so thank you for that, and I will look. But for Facebook and Instagram, information from community development, including dates and types of meetings like this one, which we're going to start publishing or posting, use the City of Qatati accounts.
And there's a, there's a new one that people are getting me into called MeWe, M-E-W-E.com.
Thank you for that also. I will acknowledge I am not a big user of social media.
Me neither.
But I have enjoyed the ability to try to expand just the channels that we can use to get information out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Is there any other questions?
Yeah, Noah, this is Sylvia. Can you go back one screen where it talked about enforcement, code enforcement?
Yes.
I had a question. This, the county recently passed their enforcement order, and they have like a complaint line for, for masks and business protocol issues. Do we, do we get referrals from them, or do we have our own kind of way of kind of monitoring? Or what is our stance on the enforcement order?
Yeah, so thank you, thank you, absolutely. So we, the county hotline is the primary number for all folks in the county to use, and then we have a point of contact directly with the hotline service that they reach out, and that's through our police department. So that way, that can happen 24 hours a day. And then depending on what the violation is, that gets kind of triaged to, you know, is it something that needs an immediate response? Is it, if it's normal business hours, they'll likely get a visit from our code enforcement staff, which will include me sometimes, depending on availability of resources, or the police department themselves will handle it. The city council last week adopted an emergency ordinance, urgency ordinance, to keep us in lockstep with the county regarding enforcement of the health order.
Yeah, and I know the county, their intent is to kind of make it like an education, an educational practice, but, or sometimes you have repeat actors. In that case, then you kind of go and elevate it an extra step or something. But it's more kind of educational, kind of just to kind of keep people in compliance.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, because we, compliance is the goal, and so that is our approach, but we need to have the tools available for some folks who, you know, for whatever reason, don't, don't make the efforts to comply after we get a chance to let them know what the rules are.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
This is Brittany. I, this is somewhat of a question, also a recommendation or comment. I just wanted to kind of ask if there's a plan or if the staff would be keeping in mind communication efforts or strategy from a long-term perspective. It seems like we're certainly more in a marathon than a sprint at this point, and I know it's probably been very active, a lot of feedback over the past few months, but as we continue to settle into these rules and there isn't as much change, I realize sometimes the communications get a little bit stagnant, so I guess I'm asking and/or recommending that we just consider how we keep that fresh. And even if we're pushing out repetitive information, making sure that we're continuing to communicate with, with our residents and local businesses on, on what's going on and how things are, or are not changing.
Thank you. Thank you, Co-Chair. That's, I'm sorry, Vice Chair, that is a great recommendation, and we, we will keep that up, because I completely agree with you, this is a marathon we're in. And, and, and that's, I mean, this, this presentation tonight is kind of an effort in that vein.
Noah, I had a question on that too, Mrs. Lisa. Just going to some of the businesses in town, I think some of the, maybe the lack of educating on the newest protocols is what I'm seeing. And, you know, nobody wants to be the person that, you know, nobody wants to be that Karen. But I think the education portion of it, of, sometimes you have young staff, and that's what I was kind of seeing. I was just wondering, on that note, is, is our code enforcement, are they just doing random, maybe going in and, and educating and just kind of touching base with the businesses? You know, not necessarily getting the complaint, but just going in and just kind of, you know, these are the new, this is what is new today, basically.
Yeah, so I would say, you know, our code enforcement resources are pretty limited, but we have been trying to do that as much as possible, kind of keeping the Chamber of Commerce, you know, up to date and rolling out information as soon as it's available. But I completely acknowledge that, you know, not everybody's a chamber member, and one of the things we've really realized is that, you know, these businesses are all kind of their own microcosm of how they're reacting and responding, and everybody has different levels of education and understanding and, and resources to respond. And so I'm just, I would say in the last couple of weeks, as I've been able to kind of get my head above water and to Brittany's point about things have kind of slowed down a little bit, I've just started walking into businesses and bringing my business cards and saying, hey, you know, we have resources available for you. If you have any questions, reach out to me. And so I think we're starting to get a little bit more traction on that, but I will keep that in mind and try to do as much proactive educating as I can.
Anyone else have questions on this one? Okay.
All right. So I'm going to move on to some individual project updates. There's, there's kind of a brief summary in the council packet, I'm sorry, the commission packet, staff report, so I'm going to just touch on those, and then I'm sure there'll be some questions. And just so the commission knows, I did get some more detailed responses on the Public Works project. That was included in the staff report, so I'm happy to answer questions and will forward that on and amend the report, so that way everyone has access to it. But so to touch on some of those, the remodel of Filetti Ranch is essentially done. They called for their final, I think we had a couple minor punch list items, but they are wrapping that up and happily moving over to giving the keys back to Farmster and letting them start to program. I know the Recreation Department's looking at some programming options over there as well, and you should expect to see some changes back on the operational side and things getting kind of more back to normal, so to speak, with what's going on there. There was a presentation from Farmster last week at the city council meeting that kind of, you know, tried to show some of their long-term plans and medium-term plans. So anyone with more questions on Filetti Ranch and its future operations, I would encourage them to watch that item. Over on the West School Street, the pathway to the school is under destruction, and the gap in, the existing gap should be filled. I'm trying to read the date of completion here. In late September, they're planning to wrap it up. It's new natural paved walkways, so it's, it's kind of similar to decomposed granite, but ADA compliant. There's some retaining walls, fencing, and drainage, and some minor paving associated with that, but that should bridge the gap to Thomas Page Academy. And again, plan to wrap up in September. Obviously, I'm sure everyone is aware of the full reconstruction of the outer ring of the hub, especially Commissioner McInney and Hancock, just that I know where you all live. And so that project is fully underway. The sewer replacement was done first, but they are about to kick off full reconstruction of those streets. So I'm sorry to say that the impacts are likely to extend through November. It's a full-depth reclamation, so they really are going to be rebuilding these roads completely. As I'm sure some of the commissioners are aware of, the full scope of all the improvements was reduced based on the budget impacts from, you know, obviously the COVID economic essentially hits that we've been taking. And so the council, at the recommendation of the city manager and the Public Works Department, broke that project up and are kind of considering implementation of it in phases. So the full design work is being done, but it's not going to be bid in its entirety until we get a very clear picture of our budget outlook for the remainder. But the road, those roads are being done, and then the La Plaza and West Sierra Avenue improvements, which have a lot of the traffic safety items, are anticipated to be in the next phase, which, like I said, are being designed, but not necessarily included in this reconstruction. They are going to be installing some lighted crosswalks at three of the uncontrolled crossings in the hub. That's Old Redwood Highway and La Plaza, the mid-block between La Plaza and Henry on Old Redwood Highway and East Qatati Avenue at Charles Street. And they, the Public Works Department anticipates approving that construction contract at the September 8th meeting, and then that would put them on track for installation in mid-October. The striping work does anticipate green bike lanes and some crosswalk enhancements, but a majority of that work is going into the next phase, which is the West Sierra and La Plaza elements. Speaking of some of the specific projects, I'm going to talk about the hotel first. So the developer, as you can imagine, is facing some pretty significant headwinds with financing of a new hospitality use, and so they continue to engage with us and move the project forward, but they're kind of searching to finalize their financing package. And so we don't have a date for when they anticipate acquiring the property or breaking ground. Similarly, the assisted living project, Sterling Assisted Living that the planning commission recently approved. that the planning commission recently approved and went on the city council for approval is also kind of in that same boat. There's not a lot of financing or interest in assisted living under COVID conditions. And so they've kind of started looking around to retool that project for some options. And so the commission should anticipate seeing kind of a new project on that site coming before them in the coming months. It's kind of interesting, but even the affordable housing funding world has kind of been turned on its head as a lot of the for-profit folks have applied for some of that funding. And so the Catati Station Project, which is a 74-unit apartments next to the Smart Station that the council contributed or voted to support, providing some affordable housing funding into, if it went 100% affordable, that project is also struggling to find some financing. And it's still, they're still moving forward and trying, but their, their main financing application that they thought was essentially going to be very competitive, they now, they've seen all the other applications because the rules have changed for affordable housing funding. They don't, under the tax credit process, they don't feel that that project is as competitive as it originally envisioned. And so kind of some bad news on, on some of the economic outlook for some of our approved projects being funded. On a lighter note, Kessin Ranch sales continue to see pretty consistent interest and they, we've issued, I think, 11 building permits as of today. And I have about five more ready for issuance as requested. The developers moving forward with finalizing all the public improvements. So the retaining walls, the sidewalks, the streets, those are wrapping up and should be done, I think, before the winter, so this fall. Phase one of the wayfinding signage was installed and essentially is finalized. And phase two has been funded with the 2021 budget. So phase two is planning on being put out for bid in the near term and will, I think they're planning on finishing the construction of that in the spring. A lot of the informational kiosks and the more broader directional signs are included in that package. And so that'll be pretty exciting. I know there's been a lot of really good community response to the signs that were installed. And we just see that effort continuing and get a lot more of the trail signs and the more interpretive signs installed by the springtime. Similarly, Jamie Lane, the five-unit project at the corner of Ryan and East Catati that the commission recently approved, was successful in their Cal HFA funding application. And so they are anticipating to move forward with their final map and then with getting building permits, hopefully this winter, probably for construction in, in the spring 2021. And then La Plaza View, which is the mixed-use project right there on La Plaza at East Catati, they've submitted for final designer view. So they're moving forward and are continuing to engage with staff, also looking for ways to finance the project, but they are absolutely engaged in moving it forward. So that's a good sign. And then finally, one thing that's not on the, the project update is the Bike and Pet Master Plan. So, you know, staff is committed to doing that in this budget year. Obviously, COVID kind of derailed our timelines. And so we're anticipating hopefully winter of 2020, but definitely into 2021, we will initiate that. And obviously, the commission will be a big part of that process. That gets back to some of my other points about community engagement. And, you know, as we do some of these bigger kind of policy projects, we really want to bring community members in. And so any way we can get input, we're going to be looking for creative ways to, to, to get some input from folks. And any recommendations the commissioners have, we'd love to hear. And then the bottom line is just, you know, it's hard to plan in this, under these conditions, as I'm sure you are all experiencing in your personal lives. And so uncertainty is just a significant factor in, in all the city steps with regards to policymaking, whether it's funding or, you know, community input, those types of things. And then also that's just kind of echoed out in the private world for moving development projects or investments forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions because I know that was a lot.
Do you have any questions for Noah?
Um, Noah, this is Brittany. Just wanted to get some further clarification on the infrastructure project that is happening near West Catati, perhaps on behalf of my neighbors. I know everyone has experienced the need for a lot of patience as that important work takes place. So I'd love to be able to report out in one moment to make sure I understood clearly what the timeline is on that.
Sure. So they're looking to move forward with funding that. And they're talking about, the email I have from Public Works identifies it's likely to extend through November. And so essentially what they did first was the sewer replacement. And that's good planning on their part because obviously, you know, if you have underground utilities, you want to install those before you rebuild a roadway. And then the second phase is essentially complete rebuilding of all of the outer hub streets. So they're commonly referred to as the named streets. It is a long timeline. The goal of this project is to give another 20-year lifespan on those projects, but it will be, you know, some, some impacts to the residents who live in and around that area. And I will send out an email directly from Public Works with a lot more details on this to all the commissioners. I'll add it to the, this agenda so folks could reference it. And then there's, it'll have contacts, folks, for any of you or your neighbors who would like to speak with the public works department directly.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, Noah?
All right. Yeah, sorry. It is kind of a long presentation, so I'll try to be brief. But obviously, I like to celebrate successes, especially given the, any opportunity to celebrate these days is definitely worth taking. So this, in proposing the budget for 2021, you know, we took the time to kind of put together some of the work that we had done over the last year, which the commission is absolutely, should feel 100% responsible for and take credit for because most of this work came through the commissioner or at least was supported by your efforts. And so just know that we were able to get a lot done last year, even with, you know, COVID kind of taking over the whole last quarter. And, and frankly, we kind of took advantage of, of some of the motivation of that to get some of our things that have maybe been, you know, we knew we needed to do it, like digitizing, digitizing all of our applications. But we, we know it was great motivation to be able to get those things accomplished to help folks be able to plug in with us while we can't interact with them directly. So with that, next year, we kind of have an even more ambitious list. I will say, you know, this is, this is an ideal list. We may not get to all of it, but we're going to make some efforts on everything on this. So obviously cottage housing is a part of the broader efforts that the state has told us we need to do, and we've gotten some grant funding to help pay for. And so it's your September 21st meeting. We do anticipate bringing you a draft ordinance for our new cottage housing. It's essentially an overlay district and I'm not going to speak much on it because JP will have a good presentation, but just know that about a month away, we'll be presenting that. And we're going to keep moving forward on all the other by right housing efforts that the state has mandated, either through direct legislation or in the case of something like SB 35, which says that in certain circumstances, cities cannot use discretion and have to just issue building permits for certain types of multifamily housing. And so in response to that, we need to create some objective design standards that we can at least have a yardstick to hold those folks accountable to and meet the, the design intent and goals of the city. We did update our zoning map and digitized it. And I will give Chair, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hancock some credit because he requested some of this when we were bringing forward the economic development package. You guys might remember that our, our downtown specific plan districts were not broken out in our map or in our code. We, we took advantage of that effort and the code and the map now separate those land uses in the four categories and makes things a lot more clear and easily understood by folks out there. We're going to move forward with trying to get an affordable housing management program built. This is part of responding to the state's mandates. We have a lot of affordable housing in here in Catati, but we don't have a really formalized structure for managing that. Obviously, we want to keep all of our economic development efforts going and getting to some of the points the commissioners made, getting the word out to the community, keep making efforts to improve our digital processing and website information sharing. And that's intended to enhance the public engagement process. Obviously, that was a goal separate from COVID, but it's even more critical now. And one of the things that we've committed to that the council is very supportive of is sending out notices of application. So when we get a significant project application, we will send a direct notice to all the neighbors early, engage with them before the projects move forward for decision. We'll put the project plans on the website so everybody in the community has access to them, can see them as they, you know, get the notices and reach out to us and start to talk to us on, on what their concerns may be about the project. This new legislation implementation, you all will remember when we have the housing workshop, the state continues to pass numerous legislation regarding housing and we're just trying to keep up with it. And some of those will directly affect our housing element update. So that is due in 2023, which again is a long way out, but they've rewritten the entire process we have to follow. And so we're going to initiate the baseline analysis for that in the wintertime to begin to lay the foundation to be successful in adopting the housing element at the beginning of 2023. Obviously, the Bike and Pet Master Plan, we talked about, that's critical. And we feel it's, it's really important to be able to update that document. Currently, the Bike and Pet Master Plan is a 2014 document. Our general plan is a 2015 document, so we even have some discrepancies we need to continue to kind of rectify. I'm going to touch on this AVAC MTC Rena in a little bit. We've committed to rezoning the Filetti Ranch. So right now, it's worth pointing out, it's zoned residential, but it's covered in a conservation easement that precludes development. And so the city intends to rezone that to parkland, expand the available parkland in the city and just get it more aligned with how we anticipate it being used in the future. That will come before the planning commission for recommendation to the council. 743 implementation, that's a long time coming. That was today. So thank you so much for your vote on that. And then we'd like to look at the specific plans just to try to maybe refresh them or, or improve their consistency and their usability. That one is probably the most, I would say, questionable, given just the breadth of it and also the struggle to engage with, you know, folks under the limitations we have for COVID. So that's probably the most up to, up in the air. But it is something that the department sees as important to be able to implement those specific plans. And then just something that's worth noting, since we're talking about the budget, is the council did vote unanimously to put Measure G reauthorization on the 2020 ballot. That is now called Measure S. And I would just encourage anybody in the community to look into the details of that and get themselves informed. So with that, I know that was a lot as well, so I'm happy to answer any questions or take any comments.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I've got a, hopefully a, a short one. I, I'm just wondering, when we went through the Ryan Lane, which a lot of staff got involved in at many different levels, so that was very nice. But I'm just wondering if any observations came out of that on that combination of low-cost housing or, but you know, it's a wonder if you had any observations.
Yes. So there's a few things that are worth noting. So one, you know, that's the Housing Land Trust of Sonoma County. They're a very reputable organization, been doing a lot of good work in the county for decades now. And they actually do manage a few of our, our affordable housing properties here in the city. And so we're looking to build on that relationship and leverage that with our affordable housing management program. So right now, we're, we're engaging with them to see how we can utilize their services and expertise throughout the city for managing our affordable housing units. And then another thing that's worth noting is that their executive director is actually championing, that championing that project as a model. And she's taking it nationwide. So she really is leveraging the city of Catati to show how, show the entire country and definitely the state, how affordable housing can be done as a collaborative process to really, you know, provide some benefits for the community in perpetuity. So there were a lot of lessons learned on that. Maybe we could look for an opportunity for Dev to come give a presentation to the commission. I had a future date, but that was an excellent question and it could probably get its own item.
I, I guess partly I was wondering, I mean, one of the things that came out for me was just that it's, it's more costly to build more dense or to build up with the type of modular housing. And particularly, I think, you know, the, the type of construction. So I'm just wondering if there's, it's, it's one level that's not a model of the lower denser side that you'd really want for that station area? And just the reasons why?
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. So that, that project kind of hit a sweet spot because it was in an area that, you know, is adjacent to single-family neighborhoods. So maybe, you know, the density wasn't, wasn't, you know, multifamily, but they did put a fair amount of units on a relatively small property. Again, it kind of was a unique circumstances.
Right.
But it does, there are kind of financing issues, as you're pointing out, to kind of some of the larger scale projects because those have become big, big dollar numbers. And, and, you know, based on what we're seeing, there's just a lot of competition for, for that available money. And so the bigger project that we had, we don't think is going to qualify under the, the new regime of financing.
Thank you.
Anyone else would just speak to any of this? Okay.
All right. So now I'm going to get a little bit, oh, here's the zoning map just so folks can see it. And to the point that some of the commissioners made, you know, the city limits are the colored areas, but the sphere of influence. So that's ultimately what the city could ever become, is highlighted in purple. And so this new map is kind of zoomed out, shows both the city limits, but also the sphere of influence. And then it's parcel-specific and identifies all of the four station area, I'm sorry, downtown specific plan zoning districts. So just, this is available on the website. We actually have copies for sale if anybody is interested in one. And if any commissioner needs a hard copy, we can absolutely provide. So this is kind of touching on some of the regional cooperation and I'll be brief here. But as I mentioned earlier, we really tried to leverage the countywide resources. You know, we're, you know, a small department, small city, and all of our businesses are struggling with the same issues that they are, they're experiencing in the bigger communities around us. So we really are trying to plug in, leverage the available resources that are provided by the county, the Small Business Development Council, which is a state agency. And so just know that we're doing everything we can to try to maximize the benefit, even though we are a small and limited staff. And I just want to highlight that the county, through the Economic Development Board, is hosting a recovery town hall on August 26th. And there's two sessions, one at noon and one at 6:00 PM. And they're essentially seeking input from the public to shape the county's efforts towards recovery. So they really want to hear what people's issues are and their struggles and where they see the best use of county resources. So if, the more Catati residents plug in, the more they can shape and affect that, that effort that's regional. So I would just encourage folks to do that. We will send out notices for that meeting on our social media accounts. So if you follow the city, you will get those updates ahead of time. Getting back to housing and Rena, so also kind of along the same lines. Myself, I, I volunteered essentially to serve as one of the Sonoma County delegates to the Association of Bay Area Governments, Metropolitan Transportation Commission Rena effort. And so how housing works, the state kind of decides how many housing units are needed in each community and they do it on the regional level first. And so, and it's based on your housing element cycle. And so you'll cycle. And so you'll see, we had about 190,000 units allocated for the entire Bay Area for the 2014, 2000 through 2022 cycle. A lot of people saw that as completely inadequate and, and kind of affecting where we are today with our housing crisis. So the new Rena cycle has been allocated for the Bay Area, the Association of Bay Area Governments, nine counties. And it's 400, almost 450,000 units. So it's, you know, significant increase. Kind of distilling that down to Catati, over the last cycle, we had 137 units. And then just trying to extrapolate, we anticipate a maximum, kind of, this is kind of a worst-case scenario of 405 units being allocated to the city of Catati for the, the time period between 2023 and 2030. So as of right now, there are not penalties associated with cities not meeting the Rena, but we anticipate the state kind of rationing up their efforts to try to influence housing production in every jurisdiction in the state. And then the MTC AVAG is also going through the regional planning process with their Plan Bay Area 2050. They just had a meeting, a Sonoma County specific meeting, which we also pushed out on our social media accounts. And I know there were some participants locally to get input on that. And that's planned to wrap up by the end of the year. So our Rena allocation will be given to us in the fall, ahead of that timeline. But they are also still seeking input. So if anybody's interested in kind of regional government, they're seeking input and have created some pretty interesting virtual processes for folks to participate. So with that, I'm available for any questions. I know it's a lot of information, so you could feel free to follow up with me directly later. But if you have anything now, I've been answered. Or direction.
Anybody want to have any questions for Noah or just comment or?
This is Brittany. I have a question and comment. First, thank you so much for pulling this together. It's incredibly helpful and really nice to get an update on all of the work that, that we've seen, based over the past year on the commission. So I appreciate having that information. My question is related to COVID-19, and it may be somewhat premature, but I've read quite a bit already about kind of the, the movement or somewhat of an exodus from specific areas, specifically San Francisco, as a result of COVID-19 and perhaps a change that we may see in the housing market there. I'm not sure if there's any sort of feedback or expert advice on whether that will change things for Sonoma County in regard to people moving into or further populating or possibly even moving out. And I'm wondering if you're hearing anything about that? And if so, if that's something we're considering as we look at what housing looks like in Catati in the future?
Yeah. So anecdotally, well, statistically, the county lost population last year. So and, and we do, so that, that is confirmed through the, the county's analysis of, of the number of residents in the communities throughout the county. They think that's primarily related to the impacts of the fires and, and the folks who, who lost their homes and weren't able to kind of find the same level of, of housing and accommodation that, that occurred. So we did lose population, very small number. I don't have the details, but we did lose numbers slightly. That being said, I think you are absolutely spot on. And I do think we will see some interest in Catati and Sonoma County in general, related to the changes that are housing in, are happening in the San Francisco housing market. And anecdotally, we think some of that, the sales at the Kessin Ranch are being affected by those changes. So getting to your kind of broader question of how it's going to affect the housing that we see in Catati, I think we just need to be thoughtful of that potential pressure as we pivot to respond to the state's mandates to build more housing. And probably what will continue to be a strong residential housing market, as we see it now, folks are still continuing to build and banks seem to be, continuing to be interested in financing that locally. And so I think that just puts the onus on us as, as policymakers to be very thoughtful in how we create our policy documents that shape the, the built environment into the future.
Thank you.
Thanks, Noah. Is there anyone else that have any questions? Comments?
This is Neil. Just, just really appreciate the overview. And of course, the, it's just nice to, it's amazing to see everybody getting out, walking, as one way of working with the COVID side of things. And so, you know, it's just, I, I hope we can feed that into the bike and pedestrian plan update when that comes along. Just a comment.
All right. Noah, do you, do you want to pivot into reports by staff?
Uh, you know, I think I've done quite a bit of talking.
I was going to say, just to report.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a lot to add, other than just to say, you know, look, just, I guess for the commission to be prepared for some, you know, some, continue to have meetings throughout the year as we get to some of these bigger items. And staff will do as good of a job as we can to give you a heads up as to when we anticipate having meetings. So you can get those calendered and scheduled and be ready.
You so much. All right. And then I have reports by commission?
Hi, this is Sylvia. I do have something to report. Is this, is this like when commissioners want to submit some information?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'm on the board of Los Cien Sonoma County. And this Thursday, it is going to be a very awesome discussion with the author of The Color of Law, Richard Rothstein, and Generation Housing. So it's going to be this Thursday, six o'clock on Zoom. And you can either go through Zoom or Facebook. I think they also will carry on Facebook Live. But it'll be Housing Inequities with Richard Rothstein, the author of The Color of Law.
Thank you, Sylvia.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any reports by commission?
Not me, no.
Okay.
I'm sure.
Um, I'm going to go to any items received after the agenda was posted? All right. Then if that's it, then we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, meeting. Bye.
Good night, guys.